I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First item on our agenda today would be public comment, and I believe I spoke to those in the public, and we really don't have anyone today, so we can move quicker. Moving to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the Brenner Lane INV MA 15-3Z, 15-7/RA, 15-2/CA, 16-1, deliberation and action. Almost seems like I'm trying to break the code to get into your phone.[57.82][57.82](Laughter). Let's lead off with staff introduction here.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Just as a refresher, all those coded numbers mean that we're in our deliberation session for the Brenner Lane Investments Metro Plan Amendments, Refinement Plan Amendments, Zone Change, and Code Amendments. At the conclusion of the public hearing, Commission had asked for follow-up on four different issues. The legalities around our expired commercial land study that DLCD brought to our attention, and City Attorney Ann Davies has covered in her memo, which is included as an attachment, development standards that might change with a potential zone change, the effect of a refinement plan amendment, and what we've done in the past locally, and potential revisions to the policy language that was proposed by the applicant for the refinement plan. But I think the biggest issue here before you is the legal question, and I would recommend tackling that first and resolving kind of where the Planning Commission lies there, and beginning our deliberations there before moving into the more detailed questions around development standards. If, I think it would be helpful to hand the mic over to Ann and let her take it from there.
Good morning. So I prepared a memo pretty much geared around Commissioner Nicolletto's questions, because that was the main legal issue. I tried to hit all of her specific points that she was looking at, because she had done some, obviously, some extensive research over the weekend to read the cases and try to figure out what the issues were, and she was pretty much right on for most of them. What I didn't cover quite as well as I might have was the moratorium issue, and I want to address that a little bit, because I think that's probably something you're going to want to grapple with. There was a case that Commissioner Nicolletto mentioned. I don't think I cited it in my memo, but she obviously read it, and it deals with moratorium. What's the name of it?
Benchmark Enterprises, V.C. of Dayton.
Here it is.
The 1999 one.
So it's a 1999 case, and if you just read it superficially along with the Lengique opinion, they seem, they could seem to be contradictory. So I want to just explain that a little bit. So Benchmark Enterprises seems to suggest that if you've got an expired inventory and you're saying no to an application, then that's kind of a de facto moratorium. Lengique says the opposite. So the way I read those two cases together is Lengique basically says, when you've got an expired buildable lands inventory, it basically, the burden kind of shifts to the applicant to do that work, or in this case, they could take what the city's already done and make that part of their application. They could update the inventory at the time that they're requesting their Metro Plan Amendment. Benchmark doesn't really address that because, for lots of reasons. The statute's changed a little bit, it's before Lengique, and I think Lengique basically said, okay, this is your solution to the benchmark issue. And also, in Benchmark, you weren't dealing with a Metro Plan Amendment, so there was no requirement to be in compliance with the goals. It was an annexation, and there wasn't really an approval criterion that let you get there. So those are the issues with that. Backing up a little bit, just what Lengique says is, when you're in a situation like we're in, where your inventories are expired, because the whole land use system is set up in such a way that your land use decisions have to be in compliance with the Metro Plan, with the comprehensive plan that's been acknowledged through DLCD, you're kind of in a weird place. And Benchmark seemed to say you can't stop issuing those types of permits in that situation. Lengique turned around and said, well, that's a little bit different. What we've got to do is we've got to put it, we've got to allow it to move forward, and the way we do that is that we let the applicant come in and change the inventory. And in that way, it's not a moratorium. So that's kind of what the legal memo says. So I invite questions about that.
I have one, just to familiarize. Is the Benchmark Enterprise case you're citing, is that an Oregon case?
It's an Oregon Luba case.
Oregon Luba case.
Yep. And the Lengique cases are all Oregon Luba cases.
Again with Commissioner Rando.
Okay, I have a question too for Ann. You mentioned in your memo too that, about the moratorium, that the ORS 197 provides, if the city has a, quote, "pattern or practice of delaying or stopping the issuance of permits." But it sounds like, I guess, how do you balance that with if you've got a one-time thing, or, you know, does that then open up the door to allow that, or does it?
Right. The way, the way I see the statute structured, and it's structured a little bit differently than it was in 1999. They used to have a definition of moratorium that was the pattern or practice, and that's no longer the definition of a moratorium. So the way, the way the statute's written is it requires a city or county to go through a very formal process if they're going to adopt a moratorium, which basically is, they don't define what moratorium is, but -- get shocked. Your Chair.
Chair Brook.
So you have to have a public hearing, you have to adopt findings, and there are certain, basically, criteria that you have to satisfy in order to be able to go through that process in the first place. So that's a moratorium, and you have to go through a process. Statute says that. The way I read 197-524 now is, if you don't go through that process, and you're adopting decisions that have the effect of a moratorium, but you're not going through the process, that's a de facto moratorium, and that's what the pattern or practice is. So that is, I mean, I think what you're saying is, if we're just taking one situation and we're saying denied, that's not a pattern or practice. That is a position. You don't really need to even take that position, as far as I'm concerned, because what Lengique says what it says. And there's also a provision in the, in the de facto moratorium statute that says that it doesn't apply to the delay or stopping of the issuance of permits, authorizations, or approvals because they are inconsistent with the local government's comprehensive plan. I mean, that basically just takes you out of that and says those aren't de facto moratorium.
Any other Commissioners have a question? Nicolletto?
So, one, thank you for writing this memo. This was really, really helpful. I guess my question is, or more of a, a pattern or practice has to start somewhere, and so, you know, does that standard only apply to this application, or is it a standard that we will start applying because we have this commercial lands assessment that isn't updated? I mean, we're essentially waiting on Invision Eugene. So my question is, is this really a fair standard to apply to this particular applicant, unless we are planning on continuing this practice?
I mean, I think the answers to that are in that exception that I just read, and, and Lengique, that basically says, this is what you do in this situation. You're not going to have a moratorium, because they do have the opportunity. And I actually would like to just read this footnote to you, because it's very helpful, and it's written kind of in plain language.
Is it in?
Lengique, yeah. Footnote, yep. "While the obligation to inventory buildable land is intended to be that of the local government, where a local government has not satisfied its obligation to periodically update its inventory, and where they acknowledge inventory is essentially useless, the applicant's burden to demonstrate compliance with Goal 10, Goal 14," and here it would be Goal 9, and they say the showing of public, but that's irrelevant here, "require the applicant to supply the background technical information that Goal 2 mandates to be made part of the comprehensive plan." I mean, it's just really clear what they're saying there. Whether you agree with it or not is...
Can you tell me what, sorry?
That's footnote 15 of...
A page on the PC Agenda?
It is.
Page 20 on the Agenda.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question, just one of timing. As Commissioner Nicolletto said, are we establishing a precedent that then begins to go? When does, when do we feel that we will have this inventory updated and adopted? And how much time is that?
Staff.
Melissa, do you have the latest?
That's a good question. I, if not by the end of the year, then sometime early 2017.
So in nine to 10 months?
Pish.
Okay. Just a second question. If the applicant was to do something to update the inventory, number first part, would they be doing it faster than you are, and would the city adopt what they did based on what criteria they may use versus yours?
I'll just kind of play out how I would imagine that playing out. If the applicant wanted to either do their own study, which I'm not imagining that they would do, because that would take a lot of time, or if they wanted to just take the Eugene numbers, or take the Eugene numbers and tweak them, they could submit an application, or they could revise their application, this would be a new application, however that worked, and it would have to be processed. So it could be happening before the Invision Eugene process.
And the new BLI would have to be adopted into the comprehensive plan.
Yep, yep.
Commissioner Burrows. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Taylor, I didn't see you to my left.
So explain to me, other than, is there a different public involvement process, aside from if they have an inclusion into our current Metro Plan, as Lengique?
It would be this process.
It would be this process, so there wouldn't be anything in addition?
Well, nothing required.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure staff would probably expand that.
Okay.
I could be wrong.
I haven't really given any thought.
Yeah, I mean, I actually have thought about it, and, you know, obviously, there's a lot of players who'd be interested in that, and I would imagine that staff, even though they wouldn't be legally required to in this context, would want those players to know that this is happening, if they are putting it in front of Invision Eugene.
Commissioner Borowski.
Well, I guess, this is a question for the Chair. I'm just wondering how you envision this process going forward, us asking questions of staff, us doing our feelings on the whole thing, or how do you, how do you see this coming out? Then I'll adjust how I want to, what my, I might want to weigh.
As I understood the beginning, it was, it was suggested, and I felt that way also, that the legal question is very important here on that particular letter. Before we get into, depending on what we might want to do there and not make a final decision, it would depend on how we get into the other components of the application. So that's what I think we're doing now. We're just trying to get a feel for the, for the options on the legal questions. If there weren't any, we would be stopping, or we would be making a recommendation, but we're still exploring that, as I see it.
Okay, well, then I'll speak a little bit to kind of where I'm at, as regards to the memo. You know, when first, when this first was brought to me, it kind of seemed like a pretty easy application for me, and then, and then this raised its head, and after it raised its head, it kind of brought some other things to bear for me, outside of other testimony that we received. And it kind of goes to what, what the city attorney said, that the applicant could kind of go and do their own analysis, and in their application, they kind of did that, as far as Goal 10 goes. You know, they said, they went through and they picked out all the lands and said, well, all of these ones, except for this one in this area, were omitted. You know, that was up in their thing on page 23 of their initial one. They went through and said, there is not enough housing. But in the Goal 9 one, it was a lot more make. And so, to me, if they wanted to advance that, or if they want to make this successful, in my opinion, they would need to advance that, show actual, the actual studies, and then get it adopted into the complants. That's the way that I read, how do you say it?
Lengique is how I say it.
Lengique, okay. I wasn't ever sure on that either, but that, that seems to me like that's the process that it would need to go through. The other thing that, that jumped out at me in the memo was, in the top of page eight of our PC Agenda, in her paragraph, she said, "That solution is an option for the applicant in this case. However, as explained below, the current Invision Eugene information would not support approval of this request." So, for me, it's, you know, okay, do we follow this exact thing at this point in time, when we know, when we actually, as a commission, know information that this was, would not, would not fit if Invision Eugene or the BLI, you know, if all the stuff that we've been working on and know was enacted in a timely basis, this wouldn't be able to fly, because there's not enough lands. The other thing that, that comes forward for me was, if this parcel was needed to go to R2, that could have been done in our efficiency measures, which we did a year and a half ago. You know, it could have been identified back then. This, again, is my opinion, it doesn't really go to the legal, I think, but we looked at a lot of lands throughout Eugene and said, can we make these to make, to help make our numbers? And this parcel didn't rise to that occasion. And then the third thing for me is, it's being requested to go to R2, and this kind of gets away from the legal part of it, but the only thing that's not allowed on, as far as housing that's not allowed on it right now, is single-family homes. So, basically, what we're saying is, we've got a large chunk of flat ground that's connected to, to services that would be good to build single-family homes on. But in that case, what the other person who testified at the public hearing said, you know, this is also a large piece of flat ground that's connected to services that could be used for employment and industrial uses as well. Just because it's not being used now, and it hasn't been utilized in the past, doesn't mean that it's not, and there is a deficiency of those. So I've got some current concerns with those, and then I have some other concerns as far as the compatibility with adjoining properties.
Okay. Commissioner Taylor.
So my question has to do with process. If the Planning Commission decided that, similar to Lengique, to encourage the applicant to basically update and have part of their proposal be a revised information on the commercial lands inventory, we can't really do that, right?
No.
Yeah. So how does that impact the process?
You're pretty much recommending approval, you're recommending denial. And in my options, I spelled out recommend approval, recommend denial, the delay, which isn't really an option. That's what DLCD suggested, and I think DLCD might have actually been suggesting that to the applicant, because that's not really an option for you. So, as far as process, what you probably want to do is stick with that legal issue, because if you decide that legal issue one way, you'll be done. You won't have to get into all the other policy issues, and the other issues that were discussed in the staff report.
Any other Commissioners at this time?
So I just have a question about that. If we find to deny on the Lengique, and using that as our findings, does this still go to City Council?
You would recommend denial on that basis.
So, to me, in that opinion, in that case, that doesn't stop us from doing other findings if we find that it is incompatible because of the...
You could do alternative findings if you wanted.
Well, I mean, like I said, if we've got concerns about how it's going to affect neighboring properties, that could also, I mean, if it's going to council, and we'd say to them, here's the one reason we decided not to do it, and they decide, well, that reason's not good enough, but if there are other reasons that should, that I think we should consider, those should also go to council, don't you think?
You could.
Okay.
You could. I'm trying to remember if the council has authority to remand it back. So if you said, no, deny, recommend denial, City Council says, no, we don't, we don't read it that way. I'm not sure if they have the authority to remand it back, so...
But they could approve it.
Yeah, but you would, they wouldn't have your, yeah.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. So if, if, if they said, well, I don't think that that, your memo, is decision enough, or it's, and council's a political body, if they wanted to do it.
Yep.
So if there's more reasons for denial, other than the one legal issue...
You could certainly do that.
I think that that's important, that council hears that, if, if it's the will of this body that there are other reasons for denial.
As a body, I guess you can decide whether you want to do that.
Right.
Commissioner Randle.
Is council ultimately the one that establishes the BLI?
Yes.
And can council establish a BLI ahead of Invision Eugene, should they choose to?
Yep. That's basically what Lengique is saying has to happen.
Yeah, okay. And then would it be possible, in our recommendation to council, should we recommend, let's say we recommend approval conditioned upon council updating the BLI? Or is that getting a cart before a horse?
BLI is going to make it non-approuvable.
Yeah, it's not. I mean, it's going to delay it indefinitely. So I'm not sure that you can impose a condition that you don't know for sure. I mean, obviously, it has to happen at some point, but I'm not sure that's the best way to do it, but...
Okay. That's why I'm asking.
I saw Commissioner Nicolletto.
Sorry, just one more quick question, Commissioner Shorowski. So, in Option One of the, of your memo, under page eight of the PC Agenda, let's say, hypothetically speaking, we as a commission decide, we as a commission believe that all the criteria are met, and there's this issue of the commercial lands study. And I'm, my question here really is in regards to your second, to your second sentence here. The risk in recommending approval on this basis is that DLCD could appeal the approval as a violation of Goal 9.
And now that, that, the one neighbor could also...
Is it, assuming that it is the role of the applicant to be the one to absorb that risk, as they are the ones proceeding with this application and have decided not to delay it, so I'm assuming that they're willing to go forward with this risk? Is it really our role as a commission to deny it based on the fact that it may be appealed by DLCD?
No, you're basing your denial on the law, on Lengique. So, yeah, the risk, the risk there was, you know, telling you if you...
That we would be in violation of that.
Right, you're not following the law, so they would appeal it.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That's really helpful.
I don't see any more hands at this time. Is this a position where we could possibly say, how do we feel concerning the legal issue, either of approval or denial? Commissioner Taylor.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Sure, sure. I'm sorry.
Yeah. My question has to do with, and if you can't talk about this, I understand it, because we haven't gotten to a time where the, the updated BLI has been approved. Under the current evaluation, is there surplus of commercial?
Even with all the current information that we have right now, there is not, it is not showing a surplus of commercial.
Commissioner Borowski.
My question would be, so, and again, this is a process question. If we were to approve it, does it go to DLC automatically?
No.
For review?
If you, if you recommend approval...
Yeah.
And the council approves it, is that what your hypothetical is?
Yes.
If you recommend approval, someone, someone would have to appeal that, but it goes to Luba. DLCD could be a party and appeal it, because they submitted a comment.
I mean, that's why, in your, in your memo, it says DLC, DLCD could appeal the approval.
They will get notice of the decision, regardless of what it is, and have standing to appeal it.
Okay.
But that Luba would be the appeal body.
I know it would go to Luba, but they would be an applicant...
Right. Well, so what happens is, because they're just like, what was the woman's name, Ms.?
Hartman.
They're just like Ms. Hartman. They're, they're someone who commented, or an entity that commented, so they have standing to appeal, to Luba. They need to get approval from the, their board, from the commission, in order to do that.
As a state body?
Yep.
Yeah, I was just wasn't sure how that process...
I don't see any more hands at this time. Could possibly we do a straw vote? And I'm not biased by which one I choose first, but let's just see. How many of those Commissioners would support denying it on the legal issue? If they could just show a hand, this is not a vote.
On denying?
Denying on the legal issue. Well, that's unanimous. If that, that is the case, then I would then entertain a motion to that effect. I don't know if I can make motions. Yes.
You know, I guess, you know, we've, we've talked about one portion covered under the AIS, and there are other, I think there are some other issues we want to cover.
We're not done, yes.
I know we're not done, and I'm saying, but we're, so there may be other things involved in the denial, or tempering of the denial. So I'm wondering, should we vote for the denial now, or should we wait and cover some of these other issues first? I mean, we've kind of established that we think it's deniable on a, on a legal basis, but there may be some other bases here that we want to discuss. So I'm just...
Okay.
Asking if the cart's before the horse or not.
Well, I don't know the legal on this. I was thinking that if we voted, if there was a motion and we voted to deny, I was then going to ask, do we want to consider, as Mr. Burrows, Commissioner Borowski had indicated, other supportive information of where we have concerns? I didn't think it was just going to end when we say denial based on legal. I want to have you discuss whether you think more supportive information should go with this, if there are other areas of denial. Okay?
I think we can do that, and do the, wrap it all up together. I mean, we can do the discussion of the other issues, and then vote on whether to approve or deny, and, and what we want to have as far as findings. That kind of seems like the process.
Okay, then we'll, we'll delay that. We've had a straw vote. I'd like to move on to any discussion of other particular issues you'd like to bring to the surface. Commissioner Borowski.
So, for me, kind of like what I mentioned in my preamble, was there are some issues for me that are, that are concerning. One is the impact that it would have on the adjoining C2 property that is to the north. As of right now, he, that, that piece of property could be built to 120 feet with a 10-foot setback to GO. And this was kind of, kind of brought up by the, the testimony at the public hearing that that, that GO is kind of a buffer between high-intensity commercial and residential neighborhoods. So with that standing, if it were to be changed in the memo that we got, or in the report that we got from staff, that C2 property would be impacted that, instead of having 10-feet setback, it would have to have a 50-foot setback, so, and it would, could only go 35 feet for 50 feet from an adjoining zone. So to me, that is an issue that is a little worrisome, because we're, we're approving something that's going to have an impact on a commercially zoned property that, again, as, as I've read where we're at, as far as employment and commercial lands, we're, we're at a deficit, or we're not doing well. So to live at that, to me, is worrisome. The other thing that was...
Possibly we could take one at a time and have discussion, and then come back, so that we'll, we'll hit every issue? Is that okay?
Well, if I can bring other things to the discussion, other people may want to discuss those as well.
They will, but I was just suggesting we do one, one now, and then move to your second, or you want to give them all now?
Well...
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, again, the, the other thing that, again, and I brought it up, was the fact that, that... the fact that, that all we're, all we're doing here is allowing this to become a single-family homes. As of right now, the property you could build duplexes, you can, row houses, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and multifamily apartments are allowed right now in that zone. The only, the only change by going to R2 is that it makes it so that you can put single-family residents in there. So, we know where, where, that that, to me, says that that's what they're planning on putting there, and so that bolsters that, it's not like it's going to be, you're not, that C1, or that C2 property to the north, is definitely going to have single-family homes next to it, so it's, otherwise, they wouldn't need to rezone it. So, that means that it, it is going to be impacted. So, that was just the, the rationale behind that.
I see that as one issue, that the changing to R2 will have an impact on C2, and it'll also lower the mix of uses allowed by the current designation. With that, could we have some open discussion on those? Does anyone wish to talk to that? Nicoletto?
I suppose I could use some more clarification on some parts, because as I understand it, the, and staff, please correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken to hear, but the C2 zone is also intended to be more of a mixed-use zone, so I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused as to how there would be, your, your fears about impacts on C2, could you walk me through that a little bit more?
Well, there's a height impact, right now, is the, the main one. I mean, the landscape buffers and stuff like that, I think, are workable, but it's a height impact, so you've got, you've got a fairly, I don't know how big that, that piece of property is that's up to the north, but it's a, it's probably a...
Three, four, five acres, or something around there.
Something like that. And what you're saying is that, instead of being, the way that the metro plan and the refinement plans have that designated, he could go higher than 35 feet closer, you know, he, he would have to have a 10-foot buffer to the general office zoned area. Right now, he would have to take 50 feet of his property, and he could only go 30, he could only go 35 feet for 50 feet of it. So, you're, you're limiting the height, so 35 feet is two stories, you know?
And squeeze three in there, yeah.
Yeah, but the way it's, it's designated now, he, he could go 10 stories, 10 feet from the property line. Now, whether that's going to happen or not, I don't see 10-story buildings being built in Eugene very often, but that, that's my concern, is that you're limiting the developability of commercial lands that are in the metro plan, and in a refinement plan, and in Arizona.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question on that?
Sure.
So, concerns over limiting the development of commercial lands, I, and this is kind of a more of a weird, wonky question, but can we use that as one of our reasons, if there's also this issue with the commercial lands assessment? Can we use that as a finding?
Well, I'm looking for, I'm looking for a criteria to tie this to, I'm not sure if you had one in mind.
Does that question make sense?
Well, and, and, for, let's take this for an example, okay? So, let's say that the, the person who has those properties, or somebody who acquires those properties, let's just put an apartment complex. Okay, apartment complex is, is approved use in C2, so you could put, he couldn't put a four-story apartment complex on that property unless it was 50 feet in, because of, it would be zoned next to an R1. And, and that, and that is a, that's a laudable thing. If you're, if you're next to a, a single-family home, I don't want four- or five-story apartment looking in, we, we've talked about that, and that's one of the issues that the, that the community has. That's what we ran into South Atlanta, we don't want a, a five-story apartment next to our, our backyard, okay? So, we want to push back 50 feet. But, as of right now, the GO covers that transition zone, because GL can go to 50 feet, and in this area, it's actually limited to less than that. So, the, it is the buffer between the residential neighborhoods, and, and the, then, if we take that away, we're, we're putting the buffer, the burden of the buffer goes to that C2 property, rather than the applicant's property.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, can, um, Randle?
Yeah, the, the question that I have, I, I share Commissioner Borowski's concerns about the, the step back and the transition for the height limits, and, and I agree, we can't assume necessarily that somebody's going to build a 10-story building there, but they could. And I think that's the concern that I share, and what that does to that C2 property by imposing a residential zone, you know, it, it takes away their ability to develop maybe taller than, you know, than the 35 feet. The, the question that I have is related to the definition of multifamily housing, and I know in the code, it talks about, let's see if I can get back to that, because multiple family dwellings are allowed in the GO zone, but do they necessarily, in our definition, have to be attached dwellings?
They don't, but multifamily, I believe it says three or more dwellings on one lot.
On one lot?
So, they don't have to be attached?
So, the issue would be, you'd have three on one lot? Okay, okay. That unfortunately answers my question.
Do we have any other questions at this time? Commissioner Taylor?
I'm just wondering, I was trying to look back through the criteria too, and it looks like Alyssa, you are, where would that concern actually fall in there?
Well, Alyssa's looking, let me just jump in. I don't know that what you're talking about would necessarily be an inventory issue as much, so I don't think we're talking about, you know, goal nine, 10 kinds of questions, as much as it would be policy issues in the metro plan, and probably even more, if there exist, in the refinement plan, that would get at, what I'm hearing, would be maybe a couple different topics. One would be potentially about compatibility between those uses, and what that means. And the other may be more kind of almost on the economic development realm, and, and stifling opportunities for the commercial site, and the impact it would have on that. I mean, that's where I would go first, is to look at policies that maybe relate to those, those issues. So, I think it's more in that vein than it is a question of inventory impact, from what I'm hearing. I don't know, Alyssa, if you had anything?
No, I agree, I...
Yeah.
I don't think we're talking, I thought we already passed the inventory question. And what, what we're talking about now are some of the issues I feel that the commissioner saw, and were also brought up by Ms. Hartman, who brought up two things, reduces mixed-use development, and that she also brought up the thing that, it's in contrast with the transitional zoning that's there. These were two concerns expressed by someone who testified that are in the record. So, I think that's what we're talking about at this point in time. I may be wrong, but that's what I think. Is there any other further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Mr. Chairman, my, my question relates to the refinement amendment, plan amendment review. I don't know if we want to start on that yet, but there's some other questions about this topic I can hold off.
I guess I could put it this way, possibly with a straw vote, does anyone feel that these issues raised and discussed by Commissioner Randle and Commissioner Borowski are worth us, worth us putting into some sort of a, a motion to be considered with when we do the other one? Are we at that point? Or did we just discuss these, and we don't feel like addressing them concretely? Commissioner Randle?
I'll, I'll jump in, and I think from my perspective, based on our straw poll, on the land inventory, I'll have to vote in denial of the application, or recommend denial. Related to the concerns with the C2, and what residential might do to that, I don't know that that needs to be included in a formal motion from us, but I think it'll be in the record, so that if, for some reason, this does come back to us, that'll certainly be something that I will be looking at, and how it, how it relates to that.
Let me ask this question then, because I, I understand it'll be in the record, but what I thought is that we were making recommendations to this city council. I don't know if the city council will review the entire record. So, what I'm saying is, I thought we were considering, if we did vote denial, to say, in addition, there are these other things we had concerns with, which I think is different than just saying it's in the record.
I would agree with that approach.
You would agree with that approach? Okay.
And I can go either way on it, I just don't think it's necessary.
I understand. Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, I think I'm kind of getting, I, I kind of agree with the chair, and I don't know the exact mechanism for that, because it, from what I heard staff say, was that this was more of a policy thing, as opposed to something that would come into us as findings. Is that what you were...
I don't think Alyssa was definitely, was addressing whether they, you would want to adopt them as findings. I think what you need to decide, so, it sounds like you've taken a straw poll, that the legal issue, you all agree on the legal issue, that you would deny that. So, I think then, the, the question is, even before, in the middle of discussing these other things, do you think that you should adopt, basically, additional findings addressing these other, the non, the more policy legal issues? Whether you want to adopt findings as part of your decision?
And, and for me, I mean, again, I don't know whether it has to be as far as findings, but I think in our recommendation to council, I think, what I would hope could be addressed would be that, that if, if it's the will of, of the commission, that we saw concerns that have, that we have seen in policy decisions that have come down from council, that could be impacted if this was approved. That, you know, and I don't know how we would word that, but, you know, we've seen some things coming down from council, that, and we've seen some things in, policy things that are in, in Mission Eugene, about, about how we want to transition into R1 neighborhoods, and if this was approved, it may go contrary to some of those policies that we have, we have, are going towards. And I, again, I don't know how, how that would be best worded, whether it's findings, whether it's a footnote to the, to the, to the denial, or what.
Let me, just, at this point, ask staff a question to make sure I heard something correctly. What I thought I had heard is, if we just said, we deny this based on the legal issue, and that was it, that council could look at that recommendation, and if they wanted to, decide to change the inventory, did I hear that?
No, they could approve it.
They could only do that if the applicant had submitted, had changed their application, and asked for that to be considered.
Okay, so that, that the city council then would either take our recommendation, based on that alone, and approve or disapprove?
Yeah.
Okay, so when I move to the commissioner, my personal feelings when we get to that point, is I would like, I would like to have a little bit more coming from us, if we're considering, and took all this time on this, than just one little single issue, to let the council know that that's just not the only reason we may not feel this application moves on. Commissioner Mills?
I'm just reinforcing what you just said, Mr. Chairman, and searching for language to consider that if it was approved, it would affect the value and flexibility of adjacent commercial properties. So, possibly marketability of those properties too, so, you know, I'm just, it's a concern that I, that I share.
So, to the extent that our findings have to be rooted in our code-based criteria, I think, given the conversation thus far, there are plenty of opportunities to essentially address the criteria for metro plan and refinement plan criteria. If you look at your packet, there's questions to address the applicable provisions of the metro plan, and the remaining portions of the refinement plan.
Was my next question.
So, there are, I mean, there's definitely a policy nexus there, given the conversation you've just had. So, that would be essentially something that we would have to do over the intervening week, as in the findings based on this conversation today.
Commissioner Taylor?
So, one of the concerns I have is, this discussion is, I think, valuable, yet I tie directly to the BLI, because, quite frankly, I mean, in reading through the app, if there was an excess of commercial property land, there are other metro plan policies that would be in support of increased residential. So, I think context is important in our findings. Just pulling it out of isolation and saying, the residential's going to have impact on the commercial, I, I, quite frankly, I don't, I need more findings, personally. Doesn't mean that I won't necessarily support, can, open to hearing more discussion, but it really, from my perspective, that point is relevant only that, because of where the inventory is. Otherwise, if the inventory was, anyways, that's all I need to say.
Commissioner Mills?
Well, I, I guess that's kind of where I was going to take it next, was, I was going to ask staff a hypothetical question related to the, the code here. And, and let's say, and I'll ask that now, because I think kind of, you gave me a segue there, so, I'll take it. And, and that is, first off, I want to thank staff for the, I'll call it extra work they did in digging up the history on these refinement plan amendments, I appreciate it gave me some good background here to understand what, what the various reasonings were for that. And, and I'd like to add, the hypothetical I would like to ask is, if in this case, I just, just want to know where it would lie, we had a BLI in place, and it had excess commercial land in it, so that this could happen, which one of these, under 98, 94, 24, 1 and 2, which ones of these would apply?
Could you just say what page you're on?
I'm sorry, I'm on PC Agenda page 3.
Okay.
You know, there's, the refinement plan amendment is consistent with all of the following, obviously, it needs to be amended for that. But then, the refinement amendment addresses one or more of the following, and, and I guess I'm equally interested in under 2, what would apply?
So, C and E, the two that the applicant addressed for this application, would still be applicable.
And they would be...
Changing circumstances as articulated by the applicant would still be at play, and of course, C essentially just means that...
So, basically...
...he acted on the metro plan earlier.
Sorry, keep interrupting you.
No, 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 go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand the mechanism, and which tail is wagging which dog, or dog is wagging the tail. The words, the reason this would be needed, would be because we are approving a zone change, and the necessary require, modifications to the, to the metro plan, and that would drive the need to change the refinement plan, and would override, key word there, please correct me if I'm wrong, would override the refinement plan.
I wouldn't say override, I think it's the hierarchy that you've, you know, we've had many conversations about. And so, if you are basically amending the metro plan, you're in essence, changing policy. You're saying, this property was planned for this purpose, we are now making a policy shift, and recommending that it be shifted to something else. So, that's C. The, a new or amended community policy would be adopted, maybe only minutes later that you're looking at the refinement plan adoption, but in order to be consistent with the metro plan, that refinement plan would need to be, you know, in accordance with what you just did in the metro plan. So, if you look at it from that hierarchy standpoint, that new amended policy that's coming from the metro plan discussion you just had, is setting new policy in place.
So, the continuation of that, is if we were in that situation, and we were approving that, and we had an excess of commercial, some of these, I'm going to use the word micro issues, as opposed to macro issues around, well, this piece of property would have less visibility and more setback requirements, those would not be germane, or they would be in our, in our deliberation?
They are, to the extent there are other policies that you can find within the metro plan and the refinement plan that talk to those issues. That's what I was trying to get at earlier, is that those seem to be more, kind of, as opposed to legal issues, or policy, or, or numbers issues in the inventory, you're now talking about qualitative issues, like compatibility, or, you know, helping to promote economic development, things of that nature, those are policy kinds of discussions. What's in this refinement plan, for instance, that talk to those? I, I don't have that at my fingertips. If you were, so, while I have the mic, I would say, if you're looking at doing a formal recommendation to the council, includes findings regarding those issues that Commissioner Borowski had, I would encourage you to cite as best you can, policies within the adopted plans that support what you're saying, because I think we, we know that the metro... Because I think we, we know that the metro plan's going to have policies on both ends of the spectrum, supporting residential, supporting commercial. And you need to help kind of say, "These are important policies that we feel this may be running afoul with," and what are those? If you're, so that's one way to do it. The other is to be more informal about this and say, "We, you know, voted to deny this primarily based on legal issues. During our discussions, we also raised other concerns about potential compatibility and other factors that, that we have some concern about. They're not necessarily part of your vote, but they're in the record." And maybe the bar isn't as high for you to specifically identify, because you're not making findings on those, to identify all the reasons for that. I'm not quite sure where you've landed on that, which way you want to go. But the more you make that part of your formal recommendation, at least I would be encouraging you to try to cite policies from those plans.
I have.
Thank you, I'm sorry, just real quick, thank you again, Stephen. Thank you again, staff, for that summary. Sorry, help.
Yeah. It's formal and informal, from, from what I understand, it's in the record. That's what confuses me, this in the record. When we make a recommendation to the city council and we just say, "We're denying it," that's it? They have to look into the record to see we had other concerns?
Right, I mean, the council will have the full record in front of them, and it's really just your, all I'm saying is, it's up to you to decide how much you want to elevate some of these other issues to the council. And if you want to elevate them in the form of a formal recommendation, it would certainly help the council then to know what those grounds basically are of denial that you're looking at, as opposed to just making broad statements without kind of any connection back to code criteria.
Well, let me just say one thing, and not to tail or anything here. Had the legal issue not been raised, I would have felt uncomfortable just recommending, "We approve, I think we're here for more than that," and I would have still had the same concerns. I would have probably have tried to see and maybe lost in the votes, but it said like, "Okay, we'll approve of this, but we do have these concerns." I think we owe it to the council to do that. That's just me personally, not saying that it's in the record. I think we've expressed these concerns. I saw Commissioners Borowski's hand. Or was that, okay.
Yeah. And again, this is kind of goes back to how this is going to be presented. And I appreciate the clarification from Steve on that. I think that as far as, as it goes, is if we did decide that some of the issues that I raised were, we did want to put in the findings, would the onus be on us as commissioners to dig out that? Or is that something that staff would do in developing the findings? Because we approved the finding, you're going to go and you're going to come back with findings. And, because I mean, that's where I don't know. Because I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm a citizen member of a planning commission. And I, I would have difficulty knowing where to look to find these things, to write a defensible finding.
Of course.
And so, so, you know, if, if, if there is an easier way to do it, such as Commissioner Jaworski said, we've, we have a really clear thing on the legal issue. But we also have concerns that if, if that isn't enough to sway you, these were some other concerns that the, the commission had, or would it be better for us to go through and dig through refinement plans and find that, yes, this may affect economic impacts as far as commercial land, you know, and do formal findings? Because I'm not in a position to be able to do that.
No, I think it's, it's fine for this body to speak in generalities, and then we will take that direction and amend the findings if that's where the, this body lands. And then we'll bring that back to you for a, a formal vote.
And just, I'll just throw this out there, because there may be a number of commissioners who have those concerns and some that don't. And because these aren't really like we think of as findings when we're doing a decision that's unappealable, I don't know why we couldn't say, "We're deciding it on this legal issue." Some of the commissioners had these concerns.
And I would be fine with that.
Me too.
But, and it doesn't have to go through, just as long as that isn't just something that the, the city council has to dig through to the record to find. I think a footnote to our, a footnote to our, our recommendation would even be enough for me.
I saw Commissioner Nicolao.
Question's actually a request for a straw poll. Just really fast, how many of us have concerns that are not related to the commercial lands assessment? Just like raise your hand really fast. Okay. So I'm going to say personally, I don't have concerns beyond the legal assessment. I would, if people, once again, can be tied to the criteria, I, or criteria on, I can be swayed, but in this case, I'm not seeing anything that, or hearing anything that's grounding it towards that. I'm hearing a lot of stuff that's very speculative and is tying things towards potential development on these sites, and we don't, I mean, this isn't a development application in front of us, this is a change one. So I think for me right now, you know, if, I'm kind of putting pause on this until I see staff come back with criteria on, but if I don't see that, then I'm, you know, really just wanting to stick to the legal-based denial at this time. Though I do like the fact that if people want to put their concerns in there, that's fine, but just once again, they need to be tied to the criteria on, and I feel uncomfortable putting them as part of a formal motion. So.
Okay, so you were requesting a straw vote of what?
I had my question answered. I wanted to know how many of us had concerns, and we had three commissioners raise their hands.
And you didn't have concerns?
They've already been voiced. Oh, I thought.
Concerns that you want the council to hear?
Oh, yes, I do. I, I thought you were asking additional concerns after what we discussed so far.
My question is, do people here have concerns beyond the commercial lands assessment?
Yeah, I, I can join that.
So I have.
Four.
Commissioner Taylor, do you not have any concerns beyond the commercial lands assessment?
I'm not, not based on.
And I'm in the same vote unless it is based on criteria on that staff could potentially bring.
Okay, yeah. One of the things, the reason I have a concern, I haven't expressed that, is, is, is from what I've seen in actions taken, that whenever you're changing something as critical as what this is, as well as zoning, it has ramifications. And one should consider that rather than just a legal issue on, on one thing. And, and I think it's our role as commissioners who deal with this and planning all the time, to at least raise that, even if informally, to say, "These are potential ramifications." They haven't been built yet, they haven't done that, but it's something to think about when you're changing that. How I'm coming from it. So with that, I, Commissioner Taylor?
I just want to, I do want to stress that we do have a responsibility to stay within the criteria. So that, I really want to stress that. I mean, I, I know there can be candid kind of expressions of concern in this dialogue, yet when there's a formal recommendation, I really think that we have to be responsible and stay within the criteria.
Well, I'm confused with criteria. When someone comes up with a zoning change, Commissioner Taylor, isn't it our criteria to say whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, and what the ramifications are?
Sure.
That's one of the four things they're asking for.
Well, and just looking at the specific and really responding specifically to the criteria. And like Steve said, in the metro plan and refinement plan, for instance, there's, there's various policies that support either side. So this issue in terms of addressing criteria, from my perspective, is a little bit more complicated. So I'd want to look at it, and in light of our main finding, our main decision, at least from the straw vote, I almost find it's moot. So I, I'm fine with an informal kind of representation of, "Here's something to consider," which, you know, if we're short commercial land inventory, yes, the height restriction means there's a little less development on those properties potentially from, but is that, do we want to actually, I'm not in favor of actually extending that to actually finding, to providing findings?
I believe when we did this, in our discussions, I heard that we're not going the findings route, we're just going the informal recommendation route along with our main motion of denial?
Sure, I wasn't clear.
Wasn't clear. Is that the understanding that we have? Please raise your hand if that's what we're doing, that we're going, we're not going to have formal findings on the additional things we're talking about, they're going to go as additional recommendations with our primary vote?
I have a question for that.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Borowski.
So, and this, this goes to you, Kristin. So in my view, I think that there would be defensible findings that staff could find that, that this zone change may have an impact on economic development, which is one of the goals, which is one of the, you know, that, that needs to be addressed, and, and, you know, hoop that has to be jumped through. We just haven't gone down that path yet. So to, for you to say that, that we have, want to stick the findings, if we want to go that way, I think that there's not, like you said, you could, you could say, "Yes, we, it would impact economic impacts, and that could do with the commercial side." And then on the other side, the needed housing, you know, so you could do it on, you could do it both ways. And I think there's an opportunity for us to do findings. So to say that it, we're only getting away from that, is, to me, I think we could go there if we had to. The reason that I want to make sure that what we put out there is, is more real world. Because what I've seen happen in this city is, the planning commission comes down and finds something on findings and on the way the metro plan is done, and the way that things are going to be happening, and it goes, and it hits the ground real world, and it blows up. You know, South Willamette is, is my, is my template for that, okay? We had a, we had an area in South Willamette that was zoned R2 and could be developed, and we, and the neighbors blew up on it, and council, and so that's where the political part of it comes in. So I think for me, giving, you know, yes, we can do the findings, or we can do it the non-formal, which is the way that I would, would, would hope to do it. But, you know, council looks at these things in a, you know, this will probably have maybe a half-rounded discussion unless, unless it gets there. So giving them as much information as to how, how it actually hits the ground is, is advantage for me.
Commissioner Nicolao?
Mr. Borowski, I'm extremely sympathetic to what you're saying. And I mean, I was in the room with Terry on Thursday when she spoke to the fan neighbors, and I'm, so I, he'd seen it and heard it. I will say, I'm a little bit uncomfortable because that is a legislative circumstance, and we're dealing with a quasi judicial one here. And I say, and this may be too strict of an interpretation of our rule, but the democratic process was what, the democratic process happened. That was why we have the code, it's why we have the refinement plan, you know, God forbid it being from 1985, but it's why we have those. Our job right now is just pretty strictly interpret that and ground all of these things in the criteria. So I guess I'm just very uncomfortable suggesting things to council that aren't really part of the requirements for this particular set of applications. And I feel that's kind of where we're starting to veer off. So I guess, I just, I, I feel like it's essential to bring this back to it. Informal findings are no or not, I feel uncomfortable suggesting to council that, you know, these things are concerns if they're not explicitly grounded in the criteria for approval or denial of these applications.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I keyed on a word from Commissioner Nicolao, and that was the democratic process, and I, and it's, it brings to mind one of my key concerns, which I think I've heard, is technically answered in that, that is the refinement plan amendment approval criteria. We would have them, given all the other things that have happened. But to me, one of the things that happens in this, when you get to the ground and you sit with people, and in hearings, they're usually talking very often about their refinement plan, and how it's, in this case, being changed on them. And so I want to be very careful about what we do to this and why we do it. So that's why I'm interested in finding out if there's a basis for, for, for citing language that gives specific support to the concerns that we have. Because at some point, you may have to sit with a community group and explain why you did this. And I want to be able to explain it. Right now, I don't know that I can.
Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. No, Commissioner Borowski, it's good you brought it up, because it really, I was oversimplifying it. It's really, I am, would stay with criteria. So if we wanted to provide findings, it, to me, it would require another meeting. Because it's not so simplistic of drawing various policies, for instance, in those adopted code, for us to then apply findings to support this perspective. It is, we have to actually then come back and reevaluate. So it's really what Commissioner Mills is talking about, is hold ourselves accountable. So anyways, thank you.
A lot of people have said things. Let me just ask one thing. If we have additional issues we would like to raise, how many of them want to be as findings? Could they raise their hand? Okay, so I, one?
If, if that would.
What I'm trying to get at is, I'm hearing individual commissioners talk, and they're bouncing around from informal recommendations to formal findings. And I want to know which way we want to go, because we don't seem to be going anywhere. So I'm asking, how many want our additional information to be formal and have findings for them? Please, just raise your hand as a straw vote. Okay, none. So what we're doing then is, if we could limit our discussion, that we're trying to provide some additional information, if we want to do that, that do not need to be findings. We're just bringing it to the attention of the city council. Do we want to go in that direction? Please raise your hand. Four to two. So let's pursue this. Anyone wants to speak at this time?
I'm, I'm going to make a suggestion.
Yes.
Not to complicate things. Alyssa and I were just having a sidebar and wondering if, just kind of hearing what everybody's saying, and, you know, Commissioner Taylor's comment that we would have to come back and deliberate, all of that, that maybe we could come to some agreement today on what an AIS to the city council might say. You know, the recommendation would be denial based on the legal issue, period. And then AIS would say, "There are concerns with blah, blah, blah."
Right.
Yep, that's.
Front and center, they wouldn't have to dig through the record anywhere.
Yep. Commissioner Randall?
And I think with that, the two concerns that I have are the impact of this on the commercial land height limits and the setbacks. And then the second concern that I have is just the buildable lands inventory, wherever that settles out, how that affects removing commercial and adding residential. Because we're making assumptions based on a non-adopted land inventory, and so, you know, without that, I don't think we could make a real formal, obviously a formal recommendation. But I think my concern would be, when we get a BLI actually nailed down, how that impacts what's proposed here. So those are really my two concerns.
Okay, any others? Commissioner Nicolao?
I'm starting to take notes to loosely form this into a motion. So I.
What I heard was, was staff was suggesting that we don't need a motion on these, they'll be, but they'll be put into the record and the AIS. Is that what I'm hearing, or would you? Yes.
Might help if I have a wording for the AIS though.
Yeah. Maybe motion isn't the right word, but statement.
Okay, thank you.
That direction, the step direction, thank you. Some sort of movement.
So, so for me, one of the, the concerns that I've heard at the table was impacts on the C2 property to the north, and it's, and for me, that means the economic impact, because that, you know, it may have some economic impacts on, on employment and that, you know, employment and commercial land inventory. Compatibility and transition zones, that, that the GO, what, in the refinement plan, what the GO was designated to accomplish is, as far as transitions between high-density commercial and single-family residential. Which I would hope could be conveyed.
Some of those are similar, what Commissioner Randall had stated.
Yeah.
I saw Commissioner Taylor's hand.
So I have a couple of things. One, I'd love to, can you briefly, I know it's a bigger question. In terms of adopting an updated BLI, what is that process? And are we just basically stating the BLI process in terms of addressing compatibility? A lot of the items. A lot of the items in terms of how the BLI, an updated BLI is adopted, what are, remind us what the criteria is for that?
So the updated BLI, it's called an economic opportunities analysis and that will eventually, part of that will include, it'll show all the, all the commercial land and employment land that we have that's vacant, partially vacant, and then there will be land that we're relying on for redevelopment. It has to be consistent with numerous state laws. And that's, I guess, what you would evaluate, you know, is it meeting the, the statewide planning goals? That will be adopted as part of our urban growth boundary. It'll be one of the many documents you'll be looking at and it will be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan.
And then, so it has to be consistent also with the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Okay, so that's my first question. Second question is, please explain, because GO is not the only transitional zone, so I just want Planning Commission to be aware and be careful of how we state this. GO is not, and also, we have a land use code right now that really, I don't want to unravel unintentionally from a planning commission standpoint in terms of it having robust development standards that actually address compatibility. You know, at least how it's been adopted. So I use the word robust, I mean, it's comparing to past. So that, I'll remove that adjective because I'm sure there's people that don't believe it's robust. But anyways, there is an objective to address compatibility standards. So I just want to be careful how we state, state these things because there's potential implications that I definitely don't want to spur.
Can I ask a quick question to Commissioner Mills?
Sure. Commissioner Nicoletto?
Commissioner Mills, would you like to still include questions about the refinement plan amendment in the kind of loose findings as I've deemed them for now?
No, I, I don't think it's been, been, I haven't restated it because I think I'm hearing that it, the question itself is answered. And that it would, but it doesn't really, the fact that the answer is not necessarily an answer I'm comfortable with doesn't really, doesn't mean I can't support the answer, but I can still be uncomfortable with it and looking for other avenues to make sure that I'm living up to my responsibility.
Okay.
And as far as, and just a quick comment on transitional, and I, I take what Commissioner Taylor says to heart in terms of, yeah, there are transitional zones. And is, is another way of saying that, you know, what we have is if we do do this, it's going to suffer more rigid, more restrictive transitional zoning between the two, the two on that property line. In other words, that C2 before was the transitional zone, GO was the transitional zone. Now with it being R2, there's going to be, the transition is going to be enforced and cause a reduction in flexibility on that property. That's kind of what I...
Yeah, it's not what I intended.
Okay, well, don't let me...
It's, it's more that, I would just pay attention to using GO and targeting as a transitional zone and by removing it, you're removing elements of compatibility. Because our code does, those height restrictions, for instance, are an element of addressing compatibility, right? It's just changing what that adjacency is. So I'm just saying, let's be, I would recommend being careful how we address this.
Any other commissioners want to speak at this time? Commissioner Nicoletto, did you say you were, you were keeping something of what was said?
Yes, I have it ready to go to an email to Zach. So I can reread those out if people would want me to just review the list, just to make sure I captured everything correctly. So the first part is, I have, we recommend denial based on the long legal statement that I'll leave up to staff to create. And then in terms of our concerns, impacts on C2 property to the north, impact of proposed development on commercial land height limits and setbacks, potential economic impacts on employment and commercial land inventory, compatibility with adjacent properties and transition zones, particularly with general office, high-density and commercial.
Okay, with that, the way you went from the first version to that, I would say in addition, maybe, just to say in addition, so they don't say that's why the legal was denied. I don't want to confuse that.
Of course.
Now, does anyone, Commissioner Taylor, might, anyone have any issues with the couple of things that were said? I know you raised the one on compatibility.
Yeah, I mean, once again, I'm not going to, I'm going to abstain. So I feel, I want to make sure that I'm making recommendations. I'm not, I'm not going to vote for this. So for, and it's really, it's because, well, I would in a different, well, anyways, it depends on how it's presented, actually. So the third item, what I've been hearing, and I understand it, is there, it's really addressing the height. Between, switching from GO to residential has an impact on the intensity that commercial can currently develop under the code. So how you described it, it talks about all three, I can't remember exactly how you stated it, which is what I've, I have not been hearing that.
Okay.
But once again, that could be...
Commissioner Randall?
Yeah, I think what I would suggest, based on what Commissioner Taylor has said, is maybe delete the last one where you talk about...
Compatibility?
The compatibility in the general office, because I think it's covered, at least it's covered to my satisfaction in the height limit concerns in the C2.
Okay. So that leaves us with impacts on C2 property to the north, impact of proposed development on, on commercial land, height limits and setbacks, potential economic impacts on employment and commercial land inventory. And I will add an "and" before that.
Anyone have any concerns with that? I have a question of legal. I'm thinking that we should have two things. One, we should have a motion on the denial so that they're not, felt that they're like related why we deny it, and then have a separate discussion of the things we want to attach, not all in one motion?
I was going to suggest that when Commissioner Taylor suggested that she was going to abstain. So we would have the motion just on the body of it.
Commissioner Borowski?
And then I just got a question as far as, as moving this forward. We, if we do the motion to deny, then you guys will come back with findings about that? And then we have to do it again?
No.
No, but because, because you chose to take this more informal tack today, we'll, I think, it sounds like will be resolved today. So we'll, we'll carry this forward to the city council. If you had...
Without us reading the, the way that you're writing the findings?
There are no findings.
There are no findings. So there, there, if you had asked us to go point by point and change, what was it, Attachment C of your original packet and change the findings there, then we would have come back for a formal motion. The fact that you're denying based on the legal issues with these kind of informal concerns stated out changes your process. And I think from here, we go to city council.
I have Commissioner Randall and Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, what I, what I understand that we're doing is, this first one is voting to deny or not based on a legal issue, no need for findings. Second informal recommendation is to add to the AIS that goes to council, those points that Commissioner Nicoletto read after that, and that that's just an informal, in addition, these are our concerns. That's the way I understand what we're doing.
That's how I understand what we're going to do.
Commissioner Taylor?
So I want to kind of explain my perspective because I really, I'm very, like you, Commissioner Mills, I'm very, really empathetic towards neighbors and the importance of refinement plans and that they are, and the growing, they're, many of them are very old. So what, a lot of where, the perspective I'm coming from is really more about using the documents that we have, the approved documents. And those approved documents have gone through an extensive public process. So really honoring them and trying my best to actually consider everyone. So as a representative of the, of the entire community. And when we make one decision, always evaluating, so in making that decision, does it impact any other population, like the neighbor or, and looking at that criteria. So that's really where I'm always coming from. So I guess with that said, I would, I would love to hear, because it, that's where I get a little, that's where I said I'm not sure I might abstain, is that this is, even the recommendation, I want to make sure that we're meeting that. Meaning, are they general enough? Have we said something that has excluded the population or, so anyways, is it thoughtful enough? Because it's fairly quick that we're doing this. So if you read it again, what I'd love is all for staff to provide any input, that in saying that, have we disregarded portions, portions of the criteria or have we impacted something unknowingly? So I guess that... And I don't want to, yeah, belabor this. It's just, that's definitely always what I'm paying attention to.
Getting back to what I wanted to do initially, why don't, I'd be willing to entertain a motion just on approval or denial on, based on the legal issues by this group. And then we'll talk about the addition.
I move to deny the application on grounds stated in the memo from legal counsel.
There are second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Well, now go to, we have additional comments that we would like to see in the AIS and concerns. Those were expressed by Commissioner Nicoletto. Do we have any comments relative to that? Any suggested changes? Commissioner Taylor?
My suggestion, can you read it again? And I'd love to get staff's input.
Or I...
Do one at a time? One point at a time?
Oh, no, I just, I have, I wrote them, I'm, let's make sure I got it right, actually. I move to deny the application on grounds stated by legal counsel in their memo. Do you vote for the amendment?
That's been voted on. We're talking about the additional things we're going to put into the AIS.
The conditions?
Yeah.
Not conditions.
Sorry, concerns. I just misread what I, so, conditions in addition to recommendation of denial, or concerns, my goodness, I am so sorry. Concerns in addition to recommendation of denial. Impacts on C2 property to the north, impact of proposed development on commercial land height limits and setbacks, and economic impacts on employment and commercial land inventory.
I'll start. I know you want to hear from staff. I mean, generally, I'm the legal counsel. I'm here to like make sure you do it right. And generally, I would be, stick it to the criteria. But the way we've chosen to do this, which is we've got our basis for denial, the AIS is really going to just say, these are some concerns, broad issues that the council, that the commission came up with. The council can decide whether, whether or how to tie those to criteria if they get to it, if they get past the legal issue. So I don't really have a concern with how that's stated, that Planning Commission said these concerns, that, you know, maybe they are, maybe they aren't tied to a criteria. I understand, I totally understand what you're saying and generally, I would be, you know, don't put anything in there that isn't tied to the criteria. But I also think what the Planning Commission is saying, that it's valuable that they have this information, that we have these concerns, and they can decide how those are tied to the criteria or not, if they get to that.
Okay, thank you.
May I recommend one piece of language?
Commissioner Nicoletto and then Commissioner Borowski?
Um, can we, it's a small thing, but can we insert the word potential just in the beginning of that statement? Because right now, I just have it say impacts as if they're like a tried and true, we've evaluated that these are impacts thing. And I want that nuance to be demonstrated there.
Okay, I don't, anybody have a problem with that? Commissioner Borowski?
No, and I mean, I think that what I was hoping, and we can move it, is that they, that staff would take our general feelings and condense it into a, into a statement for the AIS. I don't, I'm not tied to those exact words. And getting to Commissioner Taylor's concerns, I, I totally understand and respect that. And the only reason that I would, would want to make sure, again, it goes back to what I said in the beginning, that if we're just basing it on this one thing, then I think that if we, if that memo hadn't been there and that decision hadn't been there, I think that we may have had an op, there may have been an opportunity to deny, and we would have had to delve into it much further. And I don't think we need to have staff do that because we have substantial grounds for denial. But there would have been, there was possible other grounds for denial that we didn't feel we needed to spend staff time on at this point because we felt we were pretty solid on the, on the memo from legal counsel. That's kind of what I'm getting into. Whether or not that would have flushed out or not, we don't know. And that's why we're saying, we thought there were concerns, we didn't pursue those concerns to their, to their, you know, having, having staff go through and do legal analysis of refinement plans and this and that, and bringing that back for us to weigh on because we didn't feel that was an appropriate use of staff time when we already had a, a strong leg to stand on. So, I mean, I could leave them out, but, but I just, I felt that there was areas for concern and letting council know that, I don't think is, is a problem.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I, I guess that part, I am not, that's where I, I wouldn't support. I, I think our, our current concerns are relevant. And because of the context, I'm not sure I can remove the context of the denial away from, there might have been other items that we would have considered for denial such as these. Because I, I think the whole context has changed when we have a outdated BLI. I mean, I think that I can't make an informed decision and say what it would have been considering the circumstances. Do you see what I'm saying? So that's where, I'm just not going to go there. I will, I think, as concerns, sure, potential, in, if the circumstan, if it was indifferent, but yeah, does that make sense?
Commissioner Nicoletto?
Can I add one more potential concern, should the commission feel comfortable with the addition of it? I think that this is, to me, I'm still extremely worried by the fact that DLCD weighed in on this in the public comment and that there was really no warning to the applicant beforehand. Unfortunately, I feel that they are the recipient of just an unfortunate circumstance that Envision Eugene is not ready yet. And I would like to propose or strongly suggest that, and perhaps council discussed this, that staff and DLCD work together to advise applicants in the future because this is a really unfair precedent to set. And I would hate to hear that other applicants are not being fairly advised on this either right now. And I'm sure that staff was just as thrown off as we were on this. So I don't mean that as indictment of staff, I just mean this as a, you know, DLCD needs to give us fair warning on this. Would that be an okay thing to insert into the concerns?
I have, I just have a question relative to that and then I'll go to Commissioner Taylor. Was the DLC letter, did it come in within the open record period?
Yes.
And I don't know what the issue is, but someone can explain that to me? What you're trying to say, if it came in during the open record period?
I'm, my, my worry is that if this is happening to this applicant and there wasn't really any, if there wasn't any fair warning and staff wasn't even aware that this would be a potential concern, DLCD and staff need to work together to make sure that this doesn't happen to future applicants. Because this is, you know, hypothetically speaking, even if this applicant met all of the criteria, they are still inhibited by the fact that we have an outdated commercial lands assessment and this wasn't made aware to them until we had the public comment and then DLCD decided to intervene. And so what I'm suggesting is that staff and DLCD work together and essentially, if they need to apprise applicants of the fact that this is something that's happening, that is something that the city should do. It's simply just, I mean...
Well, they do do that, don't they, when he's coming in with the application? So that's where I'm confused. I don't see how the state can know if someone's having a developer neighborhood meeting. I just feel that when they put a formal application into the city, that's the start of it. And if DLCD reacted within that period, I don't see the issue. Because the applicant still has an opportunity during that period based on the comments for some sort of rebuttal. Is that not true?
That's correct.
And for what it's worth, this is the first metro plan amendment we've had or reviewed
since our CLS, our commercial land study expired. So yes, you're right, everybody was made aware, unfortunately, a bit late. So obviously, it's on our radar now, going forward.
Is what I'm suggesting feasible? That we kind of know that this is a thing and you can at least make applicants aware that if they pursue a metro plan...
Certainly, if we have future metro plan amendments, they won't get to...
That's largely what I'm suggesting. So, and I don't know how else to explain it beyond that, but...
Commissioner Taylor?
I, I have a suggestion. I don't know where we put it in there, but this is a really great impetus to sit in front of council and explain how important it is that we move forward in Vision Eugene process. Because we have these... Because we have these outdated plans and essentially, the longer we wait, the more, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to start seeing a lot of them, but we don't know that. And what, yes. So that would be my recommendation, is that we just let them know, this is really important, and have them recognize that. So, yeah.
Commissioner Randall.
I think to Commissioner Nicolletto's suggestion, I think now that staff is aware of it, I don't know that we necessarily need to put that in formally. To Commissioner Taylor's recommendation, absolutely.
So as I understood the latter part, in addition to the things that we discussed that will be in the AIS, is it suggested that also in there, we have the fact that they should move forward on these issues as far as this is the problems that they're causing? Or are we suggesting that it not be in there, that someone officially go before them and so testify?
I think the second one is what you were maybe suggesting.
Yeah, maybe.
I think it might have more impact.
Okay, so that was, that was a great suggestion and volunteerism.
I was going to volunteer the chair for that. It's hierarchical, isn't it?
Okay. I, I don't see any more hands. I think we've raised a lot of issues. I think we have an understanding that they're going to be in the AIS and staff is going to draft them. Is there anything else more that we need to discuss then? Commissioner Borowski.
Is the timeframe for this going before counsel?
It's not yet scheduled, so.
It's not on the agenda.
To be determined at this point, yeah.
Please make sure that we're advised when that's going to happen so that we can attend if we feel so desired.
All right. Well, then, if that's the case, we're done with Agenda Item Number Two. And actually, we have an Agenda Item Number Three, which is items from commission and staff. So I'm, I'm going to, well, maybe on this agenda, I'm done, I have to close the actual hearing because this is not part of the hearing?
Yeah, deliberations.
Yeah, deliberations. Okay, so deliberations are, are now closed. We'll now go to Agenda Item Number Three. Are there any other items from staff? Nope? No. Any other items from Commissioners? Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, this is just a, a request from staff, I guess. This is just personally for me. It seems to me that the commission has been put on pause for the, for the year of 2016. And I understand that that's, that has to do with, and I'm sorry, Ray Robin's not here to hear this, but, and I understand that has to do with the amount, the amount of workload and, and things that are going on upstairs. However, that being said, as a planning commissioner, I'm often cued by the public to say, what is going on? And without having regular meetings, even if it's just to give us updates about what's going on, I find that very difficult. Okay? And, and so, to, to have months and months and months of no meetings when a lot of things are happening in this community that have to do with this commission makes it extremely difficult to be a liaison to the public. And so, whether it's just to have a commission meeting to say, this is what we're doing on Envision Eugene. This is what the TRG is up to. This is what, you know, we're thinking the direction we might be going to counsel. It's draft, it's not there. But if you have questions, if you have constituents or you have neighbors that have questions, we can bring them to staff. If we're not having meetings for months at a time, we can't do that. And I don't think that that is appropriate. As far, and, and that goes to the, the idea of trust in communicating with the community. That's just my two cents.
I, I agree with Commissioner Borowski. And I, I understand that staff's got a lot on their, on their plate, especially because of the, I guess I'd say, the motion by Clark and the process of kind of Envision Eugene and relooking at that and the rescheduling, just to name one. So maybe there's a way we could do this if we didn't have concrete, specific agenda items, that maybe just having Robin here or one staff member, even if they can't answer all of our questions, they're there to give an update, and then we can have a follow-up the following week. Even if it is, like Commissioner Borowski said, a check-in of a half an hour. Because I find this same challenge, actually, in the commissions that I'm involved in, I actually haven't attended, I don't have anything to actually report. And so I'll email, and I've just been connecting them with staff. Because I, I don't have an update and I don't want to give misinformation about maybe what I've heard. So I think that would be helpful.
Any other items from Commissioners? I will say we do have a meeting, as I understand it, on May 9th. So our next planning commission meeting is then. Boy, we're almost talking to this, learning how are we doing? Usually, we have staff with us in a different, in a different note here on, on how we're doing it. And I think some of the discussions we just had, issues by Commissioners that is expressing some of that and how we would like to see ourselves do better. Is there anything anyone else would like to add at this time? Commissioner Nicolletto.
First, I just wanted to say thank you because I absolutely agree. And I actually met with the Sustainability Commission Subcommittee and they voiced strong concern that we were not regularly meeting. I think they were more updated on the TSP than I was, which was problematic. The second thing is, as I briefly mentioned, I did attend the Friendly Area Neighbors Meeting with Terry Harding, who did a phenomenal job. And what I did afterwards was start a sign-up sheet for people to get back to me about how we can improve public participation. So as some of you may know, Steve, Kristen and I are on a public participation subcommittee that has met once so far. And we are in the process right now of trying to figure out what we can do to make, make our process better, make our process more transparent and so on and so forth. So I'm in the process of meeting with neighbors and we'll start that reach out this week and the next week. And if you have anyone who you think you can meet with or think that I should meet with, or Steve and Kristen, if they're so obliging, please send them my way. We, we really want to do some important work on this because I think we all know here that we, we need to do better, so.
And this, this will come back to the planning commission. So just so you know, we're, we're just at the beginning phases of this. So it's not something that we'll proceed per our initial discussion with the subcommittee that will proceed without coming back to the planning commission for check-in.
Yeah, we're absolutely just in the talking to people phase and listening, listening to everyone.
Anything else? With that, I'll call the meeting adjourned and thank you all.